Set up practice over there. Through the hospital.
No, I heard you.
You just said that to make me feel good.
Oh, I do. I live with teenagers. It takes a lot to scare me.
Beth, have you heard anything on cause of death on Tuesday?
No, I worked at the church yesterday for a couple hours. They said she had not been feeling ill a week. And so I guess they had a meeting or something on you. Tuesday, I guess it was, and she came in, says she wanted to fill in, well, so she went home. I think. One of them talked to her on Wednesday, and I think Sean locked her on Thursday.
Who did?
Sean.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And but anyway. So I guess they called her. She she does the accompanying for Saturday Night Light. And she didn't show up. So they called her, no answer. Called the bro- one of the brothers, and he said they hadn't been able to get on her. So Jackie and Will Nichols went over. And could see her on the couch through the window. That they called the police for a wellness check. And she'd been dead for a while. That's all I know. You know, and they said, you know, that. You know, I mean, it's like I was talking to Kristen this morning, and Kristen said, you know, it could have been pneumonia, it could have been anything just creeping up on her. Anyway, the funeral was Thursday at one.
She was Clyde Stalsworth's daughter.
Yeah.
And nine, she had brothers?
Yeah, Paul and.
I knew they.
Paul and Bruce is the other one, and they had been here.
They don't live here?
No, they're way far away. One, I don't know, one of maybe a different, I don't know, one of them's farther away. But I tell you what, do you know the story behind the marriage?
Not totally. I I attended Garden Valley when Dave Newfield was.
Yeah, well, that's why Shelley said Shelley said, no, Melanie said he was the pastor. Anyway.
He moved back up to Canada.
Yeah, anyway, I guess what I mean, Sue Ann. I mean, she was so outgoing. She was a cheerleader. She was a class officer at high school after they got married. I guess where they were up there, yeah, I mean, I guess the father-in-law was just bad-mouthed there from the start. And just beat her day out to the place. I mean, her girls hardly had anything to do with her. And Clyde and Mary Lou were just beside themselves, but I tell you what, it totally broke her.
Well, see, now, the story that Nancy was told. Was that the son, the husband.
Yeah.
They'd gotten into a cult.
Yeah, that might, I kind of remember that.
Clyde and Mary Lou. Hired somebody to rescue her out of that.
That I kind of, kind of remember.
And the girls would not have anything to do with her. They stayed with their dad.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know.
I remem- I forgot, had forgotten that. I think the girl, Melody and Shelley knew it. But I tell you what, it broke it.
No, she was. I'd gone out and filled Pulpit out at the little church in Holcomb. And she played piano there.
Yeah.
And very good pianist.
Oh, yeah. She.
But she would light up a cigarette.
Yeah.
Take a puff off and throw it away.
Yeah. And, you know, she, the girl's story, they said she wouldn't drink water. It was always a pop. And possibly that that may be another thing that that hit if she got something really bad. Could have been a heart thing too, who knows? I just always felt so bad because I remember her win.
So she was a popular girl in high school.
Oh, yeah, I mean, class officer, cheerleader. Accompanied the choir, I think, oh, in the era of it.
How are you today?
Not bad.
What in the heck's Diamond Healthcare Court wants to me?
It's a jacket.
Wow.
I got a big slip, so.
What are they charging me for? I sense the darkness says, the life she's lived. And she'll have to die alone.
Yeah. That's a sad part. All the time, I knew her after all of this, and when she was playing piano after at the church.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, they want to hire me. Well, I am a licensed therapist with the state of Kansas. I'm an LCPC. They probably want to hire me for big money. I guess I'll have to turn them down this week. What I've got from Gardens and Community College. Are they firing me?
That's a paycheck.
Oh, are they firing me? Hey, our band, our band got, is getting played. We're playing the month of June.
Our city band?
Yeah, we're gonna play on Friday nights through June and then the Fourth of July.
I have undertaken an attempt at something that will probably be. Better than me. The Saturday after Veterans Day.
Yeah.
I want to have a big, big. For all veterans, all long firstman, all EMS, all first responders. And I'd love to have, for everybody in Western Kansas. And we've got American legends.
You know. The, the, there's a quintet that played for the Veterans Day thing last, oh, and then Memorial Day. And they're out of the city band. Anyway. We we started thinking, oh, my gosh, those little flags. We have to give all kinds of flags because we're gonna give, we always give them away at the last concert, last concert, it's gonna be Fourth of July. It's down there in the park, and oh, my gosh, so ordered stuff. And then this veterans wreath across America.
Wreath, yeah.
Yeah, well, she said they had three hundred little ones that they would give us.
Yeah.
So I thought, well, that might be okay to give those away, but anyway, I thought we're gonna have to pick them up every time. But what I did was I took out my big bottle of, you know, disinfectant, put it on my hands, and had the announcer say that. We were, we were disinfecting the flags after each time. Anyway, and so, yeah, they all marched. I saw little kids there I haven't seen forever.
Well, we're trying, planning on having a big parade. And handing out little flags like you're talking about to all the kids and they're watching. I don't know.
You know Lloyd's, her birthday is on June seventeenth.
Is it? I, you know, I was, he acted like he was really, really glad to see me Sunday.
Yeah, he, they're having a family thing. But they, you know, they they didn't know, and and they told the family, if you don't want to come, that's fine. Over at the memorial, two to four this Saturday. And so. I, he just loves hot fudge Sundays from Dairy Queen. So. I'm a little miffed at Dairy Queen because for twenty-five years, they have given Dairy Queen certificates for the birthdays at the city band concerts. After twenty-five years, she said, oh, my corporation won't let me do it anymore. They paid half and we paid half. Look at all the.
Does Mike still own that?
Yeah, it's his, his wife's the one, or ex-wife or whatever. Are they married still?
I don't know. They moved back to in the city area.
Well, Diane's here, so they might, and I.
Had his sister.
Know that is his wife.
Oh, I don't know.
I thought, but anyway, because, but I think she and. Or fire chief, I think they were a thing for a while. I don't, I mean, you know, our fire guy over there on the.
I got an email today from Colonel Whitaker and Colonel Darling, who've both been here. They want to come, but hey, Colonel Whitaker has a very good friend who was. Above the hundredth floor in the second tower when it was hit. And he made it out, and he loves to go talk about it, so hopefully we'll get him here.
Lloyd, well, you know more about this probably than I do. Lloyd was in the World War II. He thought it shrapnel, everybody. And when he came back. He had malaria, and he would have those malaria attacks forever. I mean, they lived over there on, I can't remember how many years it was when they built that house over there on Davis. But I can remember going in there, and he was just sick as everything. Anyway, I think he's amazing.
Malaria will hold on in your system for a long time.
Oh, yeah, and I don't know. I don't know, I mean, when we go in the bedroom, I mean, he was just shaking, he was in bed, and he was all yellow. Anyway, I think he's amazing. Oh, so anyway, going on with it when she turned me down. Because the first thing I asked her, because I'd go get the certificate, they'd make the certificates. And it was for a royal treat. We paid half, they paid half. And every concert, we tell them, birthday treats at the Dairy Queen. Anyway, so. I mean, and we usually, we get four hundred and usually two hundred people would use them.
Yeah.
But anyway, you don't go to Dairy Queen by yourself. You, you know, you take your family or whatever. So then I asked her, first I said, oh, I need you to make me twelve certificates, and I'll pay you for them. Twelve certificates for hot fudge sundaes, one a month. She says, well, you'll have to buy a gift card. So the other day, I went over, bought the gift card. I said, told a little guy, I said at the window, I said, okay, figure out. How much a medium-sized hot fudge sundae will be, tax included, one a month for twelve of them. So I got him the gift card, and we're not supposed to be bringing gifts, but I thought that's not much of a gift anyway.
You better get them at Billings and get gas points.
Yeah, I know, I know. Boy, it's been a little hot the last couple days, and last night, it didn't seem to me like it cooled down very much.
Summer's gone its way.
Yep. My kiddo, Shelley. When she was in testing, she went to that. A chariot, what, how do you say it? They're, it's where they have all the flowers and the. Yeah. Arboretum, yeah. She took a class, and she just loves all these wildflowers and all this stuff, so. She started, and when she lived in Wichita, she had room in, you know, the ground to grow stuff, you could put the pots. And one year she had seven or eight large butterflies. So anyway, so now she's got all these pots on her front porch, because she lives in a, in a apartment. She's got any place there's bare ground, in my house, she's got something planted or there are pots or whatever. Taking my life to to get everything watered, morning and night. Anyway, she puts up about a picture of the pot. She said, here's my pot for them. Took a picture of all the stuff she had. Carla said, Shelley, I think a better description would be a container farm. And Shelley texted her back and said, oh, but my board and my, my board members and my principal wouldn't look at it if I didn't call it the pot farm.
You could have a container, which is a dumpster in the alley.
That's right.
Did I lost that farmer's market, Marilyn?
No, we didn't. How about you?
Nancy bought avocados.
Somebody was growing avocado?
A guy down on the far end. I think he brings it up from Mexico, I don't know. But she said they were the best avocado she's ever had. I can't stand them.
I wonder if I got enough on this.
I can pay down here if you need more.
We went into the Mexican restaurant, they're Casa Mariachi, water business of the old American age. And I, I knew that chicken was a little scarce, and there was a sign that went in that said. Chicken dishes at extra ninety-nine cents.
When's the humidity gonna go away?
This row, this is weird for us.
I know, I'm like, it feels like a perfect misery.
Keep them happy.
Here it up for you. Here's your executive section.
Oh.
This is the one from Randy, and this is for the contract.
Down triple digits by the end of the week here. She thought that it was in the spring weather. Maybe Jody knows more than I do. There's not a.
I would say, I think there was.
A good possibility that she knows.
Only good time.
Yeah, that is. Obviously, empty.
Where's the next race?
Dallas, over Father's Day weekend. That's just a stadium one. That's a Cowboys stadium, but then I got three races out in Salt Lake in July. And then Hawaii in August.
Kind of like what you did in.
Yeah. Yeah, so it'd be three races. In the mountains, Salt Lake, Hawaii will be the mountains as well.
Yeah.
So what is the stadium there?
It's just, it's just basically an obstacle course, but it's inside the stadium, so a lot of stairs. A lot of stairs and and mostly. Like just weighted stuff, like stacked stuff, you know, joint stuff that you can do, like on a table, yeah.
Up and down, islands and where.
Yeah, yeah, they'll have probably some metal, like monkey bars or different kind of. A frames or, you know, rope. Climes, a lot of rope climbs and stuff like that. It'll be different. Won't have to worry about getting muddy or anything. Austin was. Austin was the first, they, they did away with a lot of the. Water, standing water obstacles, things like that, stuff that you had to maybe go in the water or jump into just because of. With COVID and everything, and Austin, they brought them back. It was really wet down there, but. It was a good time. It was nice to be on flat land running instead of. So that was a pass course down in Austin. Hopefully. Seems like everything's going to be not to the vision.
Can you get by me?
I can't, thank you, ma'am.
Jerry Jones coming in to give us inspirational words before we hear them.
Got it. We need to be down on field on that one. I've been to the stadium a few times. I was there. Opening night when they, the first, they had a concert, it was. George Strait and the Backfire, and then Blake Shelton. Yeah, that was opening night. It was the first time they opened up the dome and everything, and so that was, that was a really, that was a fun concert. And then we went for a couple other events and stuff like that, but never been to the football game there, but. It's a big, big stadium. I was a little disappointed. ACL lineup. They announced it. It sold out within. We had tickets for last year. But the three hundred thousand tickets sold out within hour and a half.
So they honored your ones from last year?
Well, yeah, we just held them over. So I don't know how many got held over from the last year, you know, people purchasing them.
Yeah.
But between the two weekends, you know, roughly about three hundred thousand is what they, they sell of the three-day tickets. And they sold out like an hour and a half, and then the next week, the following week, they sold individual day tickets for each and three days for each weekend, and they sold out within an hour.
Line up pretty good.
No, George Strait is probably the biggest, got Billie Eilish coming back. She was at nineteen, but she's got new music coming out, and they got. Michael Cyrus. Stevie Nicks. I mean, older for, for, but will be good, I'm sure. There's a couple other ones, and then there's just made, I mean, then there's, you know, eighty other bands, but that. There's a couple other ones and then there's just made, I mean, then there's, you know, eighty other bands, but that's, it was a pretty I think it's a pretty sad lineup, quite honestly, but I mean for
Was it a lot of local?
No, I mean, I mean, they really, no.
You're just too young, you're appreciative.
No, no, I, no, a lot of the other stuff, there's a lot of rappers in this one, I was just surprised. I mean, you know what, not that I don't find some rap music, but they do not put on a show. Like all they do up there is just stand up there and rap, I mean, they don't, they don't put on a show.
I'm not a fan of rap.
I'm not a big fan of it, but I mean, I'll listen to some stuff, you know, but not, not on live, not on live, but George Strait will put on a good, good concert, I just, I was expecting, you know, Rage Against The Machine and Red Hot Chili Peppers and all them were all making music. Pearl Jam's out touring and it's like all these
Not very many of the eighties bands play there though.
No, they do, I, it's just, I don't know, it's a weird one, yeah. I mean, it really is, I mean, and, and really the more this local stuff gets in South by Southwest.
Yeah.
That's, that's kind of a little more place where they get, pull in like a lot of local stuff and I mean also, like you said, the tickets for three days is two hundred fifty bucks. You get your money out of it, I mean I mean even one or two concerts, I mean, George Strait concert would cost you over a hundred dollars. For, I mean, you know, so, yeah, so.
He just stands there, fits.
Well, I don't know, he does a pretty good, he gives a better job.
We watched him twice, my wife loves him, he has some genius, but that's better.
Yeah. That's experience.
Yeah.
He does something that we've seen.
Oh, I know.
I mean, he goes around.
Yeah. You know, like, three or four years ago, we saw Paul McCartney there. And I mean even, he just, he could still put on a show and still does a really good job by himself, you know, and I mean, then we saw like, we saw Metallica there two years ago and I mean they can put on a show, but you wouldn't see, I mean, you get all kinds of from all ages involved, you know, and I don't know, but
He'll be missing me in a few days.
No, you don't know. It'll be fun.
Second resolution item D, we have to read that one?
Hazard mitigation.
Yeah. It's not a financial one.
It's one that we adopt each year, so I think you can just opt it as presented and, yeah.
But Yeah. And the replacement one. I mean, F is F the
F is the C O P.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you get on the replacement one, Joe?
Yes.
Okay. So not the one in the binder? Not binder, not the one on the bound document or
Turned it down and started out the one that
They turned, pretty good turn.
Documents I brought to you, Jody.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I needed to hand those out.
Yeah. Sorry, so we just, we have to, we put the placeholder resolution in there and then the bits come in this morning, so then we update the actual resolution.
Gotcha.
Organized comments.
Well, you know, last year, last summer I had my knee replacement July.
Yes.
And Dr. Warren didn't want a cover nut, so I had to wear shorts. Oh my gosh, by the end of September, it was pretty cold and I I had blanket around me, it still be shivering.
Did you both of them?
They aren't.
Maybe they're still sitting on my desk, cause I
Have you already addressed one of them? No, are you getting this one too?
I don't know.
Oh, that's right, you are.
Next Tuesday.
Oh, next Tuesday, I had mine down now. Cause I saw you walking and I'm like, oh.
And they
And they
I go fast.
They told me, they said that left knee just is bad, the only difference is you're not collecting blood on it.
I don't know. Having both of them done at the same time would be pretty rough.
It may be just in my mind, but it sure hurts worse in the last couple weeks.
Leaving in with surgery starts her
Yeah.
There's my box, I couldn't remember where I get my box.
Is that something?
Sure. Thanks.
Just rhyme one of them good.
Uh, the Marilyn?
Okay. You shot a building there then?
No, I wasn't panicked at all, I just, with my I could tell people were confused, it just, I was like
That's why.
There weren't any lids.
Oh.
It was just plastic.
Oh.
I said, what, my old age, it's getting tougher, getting older and older and older. Oh, you're doing well. I told him the other day, when I, when I went to the band practice, I said, I think what I've discovered is that as my age was up, like, oh, it's going down. When I opened my client application, it had not been open for two years. This summer was all torn and shut up. And the only thing I can figure is I had a little thing in there that I put water in. So after this season's over, I will slowly make it to liberal, to Wichita, to send some new music and say, could you do your thing?
My daughter played in orchestra in high school and a few years later, they had a reunion that I played. Said, how come you didn't play? She was taking it the whole time. To, uh, I forgot. So it's not age.
I see that they approved the band's trip, trip down to Florida for their high school.
High school? Is that kind of an annual event that they do?
Yeah, it wasn't before, they have to do it, they have to raise the line themselves. Oh my goodness, it was in the band, they talked to you to be the treasurer. And they'd have those barbecues, big barbecues, and then one year, everybody got sick of the potato salad, so they quit those. But I had to leave for a meeting and I had given all the money and stuff to the band director and I said, now if anything else comes in, you gotta get it. You gotta get it all deposited. When I got back, there were like three overdrafts to me. He paid the bills, but he didn't deposit the money.
So somebody needs to read the resolutions, if anybody's gonna volunteer?
I can.
I'm doing executive session.
Which one? The, all of them or just the first one?
The item D.
The, and the one that was just hanging out.
One is quite long. Oh. This one, just the one, okay, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just this one?
Right, the other one is not financial
Okay.
in nature, so I think we can just, if you guys are okay, but you can leave it consent agenda.
Wait, but my fork, it got worried.
No, nevermind. Nope. I didn't know that was meant. We have any
Is this Shag, is that how you say that name?
No, Shrag.
Shrag. Oh, it says S D H A G here.
Or north.
Shrag. I don't know. Just Jeremy.
Jeremy.
Much time as we spend together. We are. That's funny.
Austin, this base out here on campus right now.
I know.
No, he was out here, I mean, just wanted to share things with you directly.
Oh.
Thirty minutes on the first
Wonder what they're doing, but they got everything blocked off.
Ten minutes in this section, okay.
Here on the interior?
Yeah. I think we're doing right in front of it.
Yeah, they're pulling up all the sidewalks right now, so even tunnels are running on the, on the interior, but then sidewalks are on the periphery right next to the buildings.
Tell about the kids that came back.
Oh, the three, yeah, they came back here about a year ago, there was three, three men that had stopped in here in the office, probably.
Is this the one?
I don't know, mid to upper fifty probably. Wanted to, came down here looking for the president, wanted to know if they would be able to get into the tunnels. I said, no, you can't get into the tunnels, I said, why, why would you ask that? Well, we're students here, we would get into the tunnels and we'd come down here and start doing hide and seek late at night. And that was our fun, we were going to school. We were passing through from Colorado and they said, who's that? They'll, we'll ask and see if we can get down there and I said, no.
Why not, when I went through here? That's how we take buildings in the winter time, with this
Was
Tunnels.
Tunnels, yeah.
The funny thing is when they put those pipes in, they were supposed to be warm enough that it would always melt the snow and ice off, it wouldn't have to shovel, but that didn't always work.
The high school I went to had a tunnel all the way around get down in there when we were trying to hide from instructors and stuff.
You'd hide from instructor?
I just wouldn't go.
Or just others?
If it was in an emergency, we'd do it. One time we were on top of the school and the principal came up and caught us. Now propels off fine art.
Yeah, I did too. Off the fine art and off of the student center over here.
Were you an instructor out here when they had the airplane hanging off the side of the fine arts for DPS day? Couldn't remember how far back that was there, they had that.
I'm, see, we had our O G C.
Scenario day, yeah.
Yeah, that's how I went through O T C.
They had R O T C on campus and they always, they did the rappelling and they let anybody who that wanted to, I mean, yeah. And that, I bought these pants, I have a store called The Yankee Dooter.
Troy Wood.
And they were here in white and blue, had stars and stripes everywhere. That, that's the picture I had rappelling, I was wearing those, the building hat.
We'd give presentations and we'd train the PD and the EMS. And I wasn't supposed to do any demonstrations. Today, the guy that was supposed to demonstrate, Paul, didn't show up. So I was about four foot from the top and I jumped off. He said he'd stop me, he did, ten foot from the ground, I knew if I grabbed that rope, I'd be in big trouble.
I remember that first step off backwards
Trustful.
With that, with that wind blowing through. They, they had a square in football helmets. And what, the first one I did was off of the student center. And it was that wind blowing through and they said, just lean back and take a step, oh, that was the scariest thing I ever did.
So much easier rappelling off cliffs. Try jumping out of an airplane, Beth.
Something was backwards and it was so scary taking that step. Right, we have C H R A G.
Hello.
Hi, John.
Wow, you're supposed to be here.
I guess I'll turn around and go back.
Come on in.
Everybody doing well?
Oh. John, I told him I knew you before you had a gray beard.
Who said that?
Me.
Well, there you are.
I said, he was just this young pup when I first met him.
Yeah, I was thinking, it's probably eighty-seven?
Yeah.
About thirty-five years ago, my first stop.
Yeah.
Out here.
I remember you.
What was the project?
Too many.
But I tell you, one of the neat ones was, and I thought this was really great, was the refrigeration project.
Yeah.
That was the first private, public part, partnership project that I'd ever been involved in. And I just thought what a great thing for community colleges to get involved in those things. So, I've been involved in that, but that's
We got all the expansion to the gymnasium, those German, we and then we had some expansions on the nursing and, and, and the, didn't wait in fine art, so I mean, and the
Yeah, the, the front door, yeah. But to be honest, I can't remember what I did yesterday.
That's all right.
No, it's other than those apartments, I think we've been involved with that. So, for a long time and it's just sorry, everything kind of runs aggro there after a point in time, but I don't know, told you the story, that Garden City is really where I got started with community colleges. Can I tell the story?
Yeah.
Okay, so I find out from Lawrence Mahoney that there's an issue on rebate with the reserve accounts. And so I came out here and told him I had a solution for that. And then Lawrence goes, well, sounds like a great idea, but we have to take bids. It's like, yeah, that's fine, Lawrence. So they took proposals and a friend of mine was competing against me. Well, the college awarded it to my friend. So I went down the same and I said, oh, how did you, how, what was your proposal? And he showed me and I said, Carlos, you can't do that. And he goes, well, there's a financial analyst out of Chicago, oh, excuse me, that says that you can. I said, Carlos, you can't do that, it's illegal. So I called Lawrence and I said, well, I understand. So I called Lawrence and I said, well, I understand that you picked this other firm. And that's okay, but I'm telling you now, it probably isn't gonna work for you. And he goes, okay, well, we'll see. So he calls me back and he says, gosh darn it, John. Ain't gonna work. So we're gonna use your idea with these people. I said, that's fine. So Lawrence, next time you have a deal, please keep me in mind. And what Lawrence did was introduce me to sit around here, out in Park, Park City, and Ken Williams, it's hard to believe that Ken's that old.
I know, and he's still.
Out of Butler.
Comes to McLaughlin.
And then Jerry out of KCK, wouldn't have his name, and, oh, what was his name? Seward County.
Tommy.
No, it was before Tommy. Bryce Noel. So Lawrence gave me a reference to all these guys that were the godfathers of community colleges that time. So I have, my half my business over the, all these years is being nice about a deal that I didn't get. And that's what I try to teach people. Learn that from girls. Be the next guy. But anyway, it's been a great career and I really gotta owe it all to you guys. I'm not gonna discount my fee, but it's.
Hey, guys, it's time for us to get started.
Well, thanks for allowing me to share.
No, it was a wonderful story. Love it. This is Marilyn Douglas, the Chair of Garden City Community College Board of Trustees, and I'm opening this June meeting. Let's go ahead and we'll do a roll call. Yeah, I'll let you start.
Oh, Pedro, present.
David Drop, present. Leonard Hits, present. Blake Washington, present.
Shanda Smith, present via Zoom.
Yeah, there she is. Go ahead, guys.
Ryan Ruda, present.
Carla Armstrong, present.
Joni Toole, present. John?
John Abbas, present.
All right, thank you very much. So first of all, wanted to just acknowledge that the mask requirement has changed and it is now requested but not required. Appreciate it. There you go. Okay. Couple of things to, to, first of all, on our agenda, we are asking for your allowance for a little change. We are gonna have a second executive session after the first one to discuss the president's contract. There's a change that we need to talk about. And then after that, we will still, if you guys are okay with that, we, it will still remain in the consent agenda. And we can approve it. The first executive session is going to be coming up shortly and I'll let Beth announce that. So comments from the chair, I would want to acknowledge the administration and the recruitment staff. The spring semester enrollment was up one percent a, a year ago. We want to extend our appreciation to everybody who worked hard to make that happen. Some of us were also able to attend the Garden City Career Connection Academy ceremony, the graduation for the GED students. High honors and high honors. Some students got US citizenship and some students were transferring to colleges, college courses. We want to especially thank the speakers, Yahira Castaneda and Javier Yellen for sharing their inspiring stories of struggle and how they were able to move forward with the help of the staff at the Career Academy. For those of us that attended, any comments?
This is amazing, the success stories. And, you know, we didn't hear them all, but we heard more as we were out in the, in front of the building watching them get the pictures taken with their families. And this is amazing. Javier started in the ESL classes. And he's, then he went to, was certified in nursing or, no, it was, yeah, but, yeah, GED and then he got certified as a
Nurse aide.
Nurse aide, and then he got the LPN and he's got his RN and he's going to work for St. Catherine's July first. That's amazing.
I had several, or at least a couple of parents come up and say, thank you, good day. Saw them in the store or something, recognized me, so.
Yeah, very heartwarming. You remember Mitch Young, when we first started working with Tyson? Mitch was the one that was, I mean, he was, they had a, a, the people we worked with, getting them to get their GEDs and so forth, and his wife owns over here the nail place, Pothails. And she said something about, he was at, or they were at the commencement, the co- commencement, at, at the ceremony, because I think they have a brand center or somebody. And she just said, it was just amazing. And said Mitch took lots and lots and lots of pictures.
All right, we do not have any new employees, I understand. Okay, so I will allow you to ask for executive session.
This chairman, I moved the board recess into executive session for attorney slash client confidentiality concerning.
We're gonna go. I'm sorry.
A discussion of pending litigation and claims. Jeremy Shrag, lead counsel, as well as President Ruda and Vice President Armstrong, are asked to be included. The opening meeting will resume here in the president's conference room in thirty minutes. It is now.
Six, well, five, six eleven.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion in the second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, Beth, aye.
David, aye. Leonard, aye. Blake, aye.
Shanda, aye.
All right. Yeah, Shanda, we'll, we'll dial you in, hon.
All right, I'll hang out here and be waiting.
Okay.
So you guys are leaving.
My sister was calling Joyce and she loved you.
I was gonna say, it was a little gray, a little skinny. Good, good. Thank you.
Sure.
How are you today?
Pretty good, how are you?
Well, it was a big wreck. East of the airport.
Oh, really?
I had to take a ten-minute detour off the dirt road.
Oh, no.
And then an older guy, my age, an older guy was on the motorcycle and he had a wreck on the dirt road, on the bike path.
Oh, no.
So semi's pulled over from the opposite direction to help him. So the highway was blocked and the detour was blocked. I was like, well, I'm glad I came out long before I needed to today.
Because what are the odds of two?
I know, but I guess the one on the highway was really bad. And I don't know how they're gonna get some of those semis with the windows though, down that dirt road.
Oh, yeah, that's gonna be. Oh yeah, that's gonna be...
Executive session, hi to eight, so, okay?
Okay.
John, we have one more executive session.
Sure.
Ten minutes.
I brought a book. But I had a wonderful conversation. I've got a book here to read. Yeah, thanks.
Did anybody disconnect? Shanna? Nope, she's still on. Okay. Hi, Shanna.
Hello.
All right, we are back in session. And to announce that there was no action taken from this first executive session. And we are now seeing the second session.
Madam Chair, motion to move, to move that the board recess into executive session to discuss confidential employee information pursuant to the open meetings, exception for the personnel matters of non-elected personnel, which if discussed in open meeting might violate their right to privacy. And then our Vice President for Administrative Services and our CEO, be included. The open meetings will resume here in the President's Conference Room in ten minutes. Return to opening meeting at...
Seven fifty-five? I'm just gonna...
Six fifty-five.
Amanda, it's just, we're just asking Carla Armstrong, the CFO, to attend. Not, not the President.
Who did I say?
I thought I just said my...
Whatever.
I'll second that, CFO.
Yeah.
So, six fifty CFO. At six fifty-five. I'll second that.
So, we have a motion in a second to our second executive session. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's go.
Very good news for rates.
Uh-huh. Absolutely. Yeah, it was a good...
Markets are, uh, markets are finicky there. Especially for, uh, at least the stock markets and things like that. No, it's not an indication necessarily what interest rates are doing.
The, um, interest rates will go down. There, the mathematics of it is that with interest rates getting down, there's no income.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So, you want to say that's correct, sorry?
Sure.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Can I have a copy so I can put with Shanna's stuff? She wants it.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, we're back in session from the executive session. Shanna, are you bringing back on?
She's up there.
She's up there.
AM, if I can push the button fast enough.
Okay, great, thank you. So, in our executive session, we do have an action that we acted on. And it pertains to item three F in the consent agenda. Page forty-seven. Carla, I'll let you explain our change here.
Okay, so, in, um, in reviewing the, the salary and the benefit package that the board had put together, um, it, upon review, we identified that, um, we needed to reallocate the $10,000 that was going on the benefit side and put that as a part of the salary.
So, I would entertain a motion to amend this item.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to amend the President's contract, only reallocating what was originally issued in the benefit package to the actual salary. So, the salary will change from 165,000 to, plus the benefits, to 135,000 plus.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the amendment to item three F. Is there any more discussion? Shanna?
I'm good.
All right, we'll go ahead and vote by roll call. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 She, Beth, go ahead. Aye, Beth.
David, aye. Leonard, aye.
Blake, aye.
Shanna, aye.
Marilyn, aye. Thank you, guys. All right, so, our consent agenda is amended. So, we are now on the consent agenda. And so, I would encourage us to pull item D for a separate discussion. Any other items or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. A, B, C, E, F, G, H, I.
I'll second that. So, a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. A, B, C, E, F, G, H, I. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So, let's go back to item D. And I'll let... Did I do the right ones?
Yes.
We are on our... Extra page or page insert. And then I think John handed out, um, the summary of it. So, um, we have John Haas with us today to, um, share the good news.
First of all, do I look better on TV than I do in person?
You look better here.
It's nice to have you.
That's right.
I could tell you. I probably were too close. Anyway, at ten o'clock today, we took bids for the five point four million dollars for the new various projects that you have. We received four bids, which is, you can see on the first page on here. Western State Bank was the bidder number one, but they didn't quite get close enough for that. Winning bid was from Brookford's Bankers' Bank Security with an average rate of 1.433%. Which over a fifteen-year financing is still phenomenal. I am sure that local banks got the opportunity to buy some of these, because usually that is where the first call is. The second page is a copy of the original bid from them. And you'll notice that the short-term interest rates are two, and then in twenty-nine, it starts at 1.1, out to a two. And, um, this has to do with dollar prices and premium and, and things like that. Third col, uh, the second column from the right is the yield. Those are your really cost to, you know, ignore the coupons. The yields are what your cost of monies are for each one of those maturities. But, but based on this, we bid four million, one fifty. We were able to, with premiums, reduce the size of the bond issue. If you turn to page three, table one, to a nice round four million dollar bond issue. And if you look down at the bottom, project cost is four million, but they're paying, giving you, paying you a premium of 125,000, eight eighty. Cost of issuance around approximately ninety-eight thousand. And I don't think the rating fee is gonna be that high, but I always wanna make sure there's plenty in the budget under writer's discount. That's what we're paying the, the writer to sell the bonds. Twenty-six thousand nine sixty, that adds up to four million. Number one, I wanna talk to you about original estimate of total payments. Four million, six fifty-nine, and that was the estimate that I gave you last month. Actually, the total combined payments is four million, five ninety-five. So, the total costs, fifty, sixty thousand dollars less than what I showed you last month. And then Kevin Cowan pointed out to me, it's probably over a hundred thousand dollars less from when we got started. So, um, the President and I were talking about different things. What's really driving, um, the municipal market right now are taxes, anticipation of individual and corporate taxes go up. People are piling into municipals, which are triple tax exempt. So, that makes, on an after-tax basis, that makes them more valuable at that. Then, in your board packets, I believe, is a resolution. And I guess, first of all, do you have any questions about the handouts that I gave you? And the, um, the, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, John. Our original estimate of payments is gonna be less than what we thought it would be.
Yes.
Hey, John, just a question for, I guess...
Hey, John, just a question for, I guess, my application. How much did the standard four is rating in the process of going through standards and forth, play into grade?
Well, typically, and that's hard to say, but probably about twenty basis points. And you'll see on here that that the net interest cost of one forty-three versus a one sixty is about fifty-eight thousand dollars differential in total interest costs. So that's what we kind of figure. And on the short term, there's probably not a whole lot of difference. But it has to do with the longer term bonds. And so the average rate is higher based on having to induce investors to buy a higher rated bond on the long.
What are the reasons why? The reason why is that there's a car that gone through the process of rating through standards and four here in the past several months. And it's, it's an intensive process. But through that process, there's standards and four came back with an A-plus rating on the college.
What was that again?
That was an A-plus rating on the college.
Yeah, it's really good. Very few community colleges, Johnson County, have anything better than an A-plus, which they're an A-plus. What's better, the next step is a double A minus than a double A.
I didn't know there was that.
Yeah, and then there's
Always one more level.
And then there's triple A.
Okay.
But, but it's better than going triple B, double B, B, triple C that way. So, um, it's a good, it's a good rating. The city is probably not any different. County is probably not any different. It really has to do with your tax base and how much money is in your savings account.
Yeah, it was actually, um, I've been through other ones. And I'll just have to say that the our underwriter, because I heard the underwriters, or Brian, the representative.
Brian, for S and P.
Yeah. He was, he didn't get what he was expecting because most of the questions were about COVID related. And so we, you know, yeah, there, our community, our community has experienced challenges through COVID. But where else in the middle of a pandemic do you open up an Old Navy walk-in retail store? I mean, you know, it's like, it's different here. You know, and, and so, you know, and so I just talked about those differences and but I mean, it's just, you just see it in, you know, production-based community and, you know, there was, but it was a, you know, you have to put a little work into it to get ready, but.
Okay, I think, I'm just trying to clarify that I understand your point that S and P rating helps
Lower the interest rate.
To get a lower interest rate.
In fact, they used that, bond council used to ask, maybe they did it themselves now for a cost benefit analysis once the bond issues are sold. So, you know, at a minimum, probably save thirty-five, forty thousand dollars in interest cost. Again, it's hard to quantify here and there. If this issue had been, well, like your refunding, we did that short. Probably also locally, rating doesn't make all that much difference. Here again, on the long end, short ones probably went locally. And then they start calling individual investors for the long ones. So, so the benefit is that you get more bidders, that the more bidders you have, the more aggressive that you can be. So it's just been our policy for anything over a couple of million or more than ten years that you go get the rating. Because it just, and then I don't know if there's any bankers on the board, but bankers will tell me if it's rated, they have to not spend as much time with regulators explaining things. When you have a local issue, your banker's willing to do that. But it's hard to sell the other bankers' non-rated paper. So it just, it just makes it easier, easier to sell.
Rating is an indication of what your risk is.
Right.
The greater the risk, the higher the rate.
It's a relative risk function. You're good. So if you decide the, oh, did you have one, one question? Okay, so if you decide to proceed, all that needs to be done is approve the resolution. And you all read the whole resolution? Would you like for me to read the whole resolution? Or am I taking somebody's job?
Wake off or I'll read.
It's up to you.
It's, it's fine, I can do it, but
Go for it, if you'd like.
Do, is there a resolution number twenty-two-one dash, anything?
Don't know that's the
Z, I'm sorry.
Dash F.
Yeah.
F. Okay, so go ahead and read it.
Please.
Resolution number twenty-two-one dash F. A resolution authorizing Garden City Community College to enter into a lease purchase transaction that proceeds of which will be used to pay for the cost of acquiring construction and equipment, certain building improvements in Garden City, Kansas, and approving the exec execution of certain documents in connection therewith. Whereas, under the constitution and statutes of the state of Kansas, in particular, KSA seventy-one dash two oh one, Garden City Community College, Finney County, Kansas, the college is empowered to enter into a certain leases and certain leases and lease purchase agreements for the lease and the, and or acquisition of property. And whereas the college has immediate need to acquire, construct, and equip by lease purchase agreement, certain rodeo facility improvements, a new chiller, bus acquisition, campus lighting for security purposes, boiler replacement, a new dishwasher system, a new transportation building, replacement of the sectional, section of tunnel cap, replacement of hydraulic water pipe, bronchus or suite roof replacement, west hall restroom repairs and replacement, and water heater system replacement, and theater improvements on or near the college campus in Garden City, Kansas. The improvements, which will further its educational and public purposes, but does not have sufficient monies on hand legally available to purchase improvements for its use. And whereas the governing body of the college has here to for adopted a resolution on March ninth, twenty-twenty-one, the intent resolution declare, declaring the intent for the college to enter into a financial agreement for the improvements involving a lease purchase agreement at an estimated cost of four million one hundred and fifty-six thousand, subject to the provisions of the KSA ten dash one-one-one C sixty. And whereas the intent resolution was duly published and no sufficient petition or opposition of the lease purchase agreement was filed with the county clerk of Finney County, Kansas. And whereas the governing body of the college now finds and determines that it is advisable to enter in a financial agreement involving a lease purchase agreement, the lease, and the issuance of delivery of correspondence certificates of participation series twenty-twenty-one B in the principal amount of four million dollars, the certificates evidencing proportionate interests of the owners, therefore, into base, basic, basic rent payments to be made by the college under the lease and to provide financial for improvements. And whereas in order to facilitate foregoing and to pay the costs thereof, it is necessary and desirable for the college to take the following actions. Number one, enter into a site lease, the site lease with the college as lease or and securities bank of Kansas City, Kansas City, Kansas, the trustee as leasing, pursuant to the, to which the college will lease certain real property to the trustee on the terms and conditions set forth therewithin, a form of which has been submitted to the governing body for review. Two, enter into a lease purchase agreement, it will lease with the trustee pursuant to the college will lease the project as defined in the lease, from which the trustee with the option to purchase the trustee's interest in the project, a form of which has been submitted to the governing body for review. Three, approve a declaration of trust, the declaration of trust by the trustee pursuant to which the certificates will be executed and delivered, a form of which has been submitted to the governing body for review for approval. Approve the final official statement respecting the certificates. And five, authorize a tax compliance agreement, the tax compliance agreement pursuant to the college and trustee convene, covenant convenient and agree to comply with various federal tax requirements necessary to maintain the extension from federal income taxation of the interest portion of the basic rent payments under the lease. The site, the site lease, lease, the official statement, and the tax compliance agreement are referred to together herein as the college documents. Therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of Garden City Community College as follows. Section one, authorization and approval of college documents and declaration of trust. A, the college documents and declaration of trusts are hereby approved in substantial forms submitted to the, to and reviewed by the governing body on the date thereof. With such changes therein shall be approved by the chairperson and chairperson's execution of the college documents to the conclusive evidence of such approval. B, the obligation of the college to pay basic rent payments as defined as the lease. Under the lease shall constitute a current expense of the college and shall not be in any way be construed to be indebtedness or liability of the college in contravention of any applicable constitutional or statutory limitations or requirement concerning the creation of indebtedness or liability to the college and all provisions of the lease shall be construed construed so as to give effect to such intent. C, the chairperson is hereby authorized to direct and directed to execute and deliver the college documents and approve the changes of their declaration of trust on behalf of and as the act of deed of the college. Secretary of the Board trustees is hereby authorized to affix the college seal to the college documents and test said seals. Section two, approval of official statement. The final official statement is hereby authorized and approved, supplementing and amending and completing the preliminary official statement with such changes therein. In addition thereto, as shall be approved by the officer of the college executing the final official statements. Said officer's execution thereof to be conclusive evidence of said officer's approval thereof and the public distribution of the final official statement by the purchaser of the refunding certificate of participation are in all respects hereby authorized and approved. The chairperson of the college is hereby authorized to execute and deliver the final official statements on behalf of, of and as the act and deed of the college. Section three.
However, I interrupt for just a second. The word refunding should be struck from the resolution. So when it's approved or amended.
Okay.
Subject to, just
Where?
Which is, that was
So don't worry about it. Oh, so do you want me to restate that?
No.
Okay, okay.
We've made the board aware of it.
Okay. The refunding on three lines.
Read that word refunding should be just struck, you know, be fine.
Okay. Section three, further authority, the college shall and the officials and agents of the college are hereby authorized and directed to take such action, expend such funds, and execute such other documents, certificates, and instruments as may be necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent of the resolution. And to carry out, comply with and perform the duties of the college with respect to the college documents and other documents authorized or approved hereby and the project. Without limiting the foregoing, the chairperson is hereby authorized to execute a tax compliance agreement and other closing documents, and if required, to execute any certificate of agreements to allow the underwriter to comply with rule fifteen C two dash one-two of the Securities and Exchange Commissions. Section four, mandatory provisions pursuant to the KSA seventy-one dash two oh one C. The college shall omit from the college documents the mandatory contract provisions of DA dash one-four-six A. Section five, effective date, the resolution shall take effect and be in full force from the, from and after its passage by the governing body. So the only amendment would be striking the refunding from the statement. Yeah, from the statement where it's public distribution of the official statements by the purchaser of the refunding certificate of participation on section two. So refunding would be struck.
And Carla, if you'd help me remember.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll send myself.
All right. So let's just officially approve the amendment first and then I'll prove the whole document. So Blake has made an amendment to strike the word refunding on page two. I would second that. Yeah. A motion and a second to strike the word refunding as recommended by Mr. Haas. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, all right. I entertain a motion to approve the resolution as read. I move to approve the resolution as read.
I'll second that.
So motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty-two-one dash F as amended. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, let's do a roll call. Beth, I.
David, aye. Leonard, aye. Blake, aye.
Shanda, aye.
And Marilyn, aye. Congratulations, everybody.
Well, thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
It was going to take a year to get this started when I was out here on margin last year. And I understood your reasons for waiting. And interest rates held, which I was concerned that they wouldn't, but they have. So I think it all worked out very well for you all.
Thank you for your great assistance.
You're welcome. Any other questions for me to follow and take on? Thank you for coming out. You're welcome.
So you're going to, we get an extra one hundred thousand dollars, right?
No. I'm sorry. Maybe I should have asked.
I'm just joking, I apologize.
Like, oops.
No, I apologize, I'm just joking. Thank you for your help.
You're welcome very much. Um, but thanks again, it was, it was a pleasure.
Thank you.
Are you driving home?
Yeah, I think so. If I can get home by midnight, I'd do pretty good. But anything after that, not anymore.
Watch out for the deer, yeah.
The deer, and I don't know, you guys hear there was a really terrible accident out on the highway?
No.
No.
Yeah, I had to take a bypass on some dirt roads. Mount fur, more the longer, I can't remember. But then a guy was trying to drive the dirt roads on a motorcycle and he fell over.
Oh, no.
And so the bypass, the detour was all backed up trying to help him. So I'm glad I left an hour early today. But the really bad accident was out on the highway. I believe probably on the lane going east on the other side of the airport.
Okay, so. And that turn right there by Pierceville? That area is dangerous anymore.
So hopefully everything's okay, but boy, they weren't letting anybody down there. So, well, thank you. And you'll have money, you can spend your not extra one hundred and twenty-five thousand on June thirtieth.
Thank you. Thank you.
Aggressive, thank you all.
I just get a curve.
That curve.
Is
People try to pass on that curve.
Well, it was, it was our senior, it was our senior year in high school, two weeks before graduation. One of our classmates was Okay, folks, we're on item four of our agenda. The confirmation monitoring report, starting on page seventy-nine. We'll just preview these. The first one is academic advancement. The monitoring points are that students will have appropriate knowledge of transfer requirements. Students will have the academic prerequisites sufficient for successful transfer. And students will have opportunities for advanced degrees. And the interpretation is mentioned, well-written for each of those points. Any questions or discussion about what's presented? So, number one, the students will have appropriate knowledge of transfer requirements. The discussion is about how the students engage with their advisors and how that conversation goes. And that they're provided with the information for their transferring credits. But I did wanna bring up something on number two. Students will have the academic prerequisites sufficient for successful transfer. If you notice on the call or on the table on page eighty-one, Garden City Community College is listed as ninth or in the community colleges for credits transferring. And I wanted to ask President Ruda or Vice President Mark Malone about how they feel about that ranking. And explain it.
I'll, I'll start and then Mark definitely jump in there then as well. But, you know, one, one of the things here with this chart, well, several things just to kind of write a little context is, you know, the state, the board of regents used to provide a very thorough and robust reporting to us there that was by department. It really became broken down very specifically there on each of the institutions. They changed a lot of their reporting because there were, there was data showing the community college students were faring very strongly in the transfer process versus native students. And so a lot of that data has, has really been eliminated and kind of tightened down as far as what it is it's reporting. So what we get in our transfer feedback reports there from the institutions are really more of just a collective overview of GPAs and the number of hours transferred. So one of the things that I would, that I would point out in this table, as Chair Douglas had mentioned, you know, we, for this past year, sit at number nine out of nineteen community colleges, at roughly forty-nine, an average of forty-nine credit hours that transfer to the six institutions. Where that, you know, where that deviates and then, you know, you always take a look at the standard deviation there. So last year, we were at fifty point one. This year, we're at forty-nine point zero. So in the grand scheme of, of standard deviation, there isn't, there isn't much change, there isn't much movement there in the total numbers. The other thing that I would preface and say with that there as well is if you remember three years ago, we made the move as an institution to change our degree requirements from sixty-four hours to sixty. Actually, it was four years ago. So many of our sister community colleges still have their degree requirement set at sixty-four hours. So they're going to have more hours that are transferred. We have our degree set at sixty. And the reason why we did that is because the Board of Regents is now limited bachelor's degrees to a hundred and twenty hours. So bachelor's degrees used to be a hundred and twenty-four. Now we have aligned our associate's degree with bachelor's institutions. Four-year institutions require sixty credits to be taken at the four-year level. So it doesn't make sense for us to require students to take more hours if they're going to lose in the transfer process. So some of this is a little bit.
Misleading.
Yeah, yeah, misleading in this. But the other, the other thing that I would point out there too, our top three transfer institutions in the state of Kansas, Hays is our top transfer institution, followed by Wichita State, followed by Kansas State. So when you take a look at our top three institutions as far as where students choose to transfer to, those are the three institutions that have the highest number of hours that are transferring at. You know, Hays has fifty-seven hours, fifty-one at K-State, fifty-nine at Wichita State. So, you know, with those institutions being the, the primary destination for our students, we fare very strongly there within that. Each of those three institutions, as we take a look to last year's report, when we looked at this there as well, all three of those institutions have actually increased on the number of hours that have transferred in comparison to last year's report. So where our students are transferring, we're moving the needle and more hours are going to on that. Mark, I don't know if you have other points or anything else you wanna collaborate on?
No, I would just add that in, in terms of our top three transfer institutions, based on a hundred and twenty-hour bachelor degree, we would expect students usually to take sixty of those hours with us their first two years. So Fort Hays, with, with those kind of assumptions, Fort Hays are number one transfer institution. Students are transferring ninety-five point five percent of their hours of those sixty. So there are other institutions that might have more credit hours in their degrees or that were, they have not limited down to sixty yet, which they will be required to by K-Bor. Garden City Community College was ahead of the curve on that by following those instructions early. But there may be some institutions who are transferring more than sixty hours. But that's also part of our future, future partnership with the Fort Hays State here on campus. So I think that there are, you know, there, the, the data now comes out in this kind of big database on the K-Bor website and we can slice and dice these numbers about fifty different ways. This is just one way of looking at it. It provides a good snapshot and a baseline of where we are in comparison. But I also think that it shows that, that a, a large percentage of our credit hours are transferring to our major institutions.
And if you, if you look at Wichita State, we're at the top. Fifty-nine point one nine.
So my answer is, as Vice President for Instructional Services is, I think that while the rank here is ninth, there are some really strong parts of this report for us. And it also shows, you know, we're, we, increasing our rank here increases our service to students. So there are things that we are doing under the leadership of Dr. Ruda, including that four-year partnership. We're not resting on the laurels at nine, even though there are strong components to that report where we're at none. But we have plans for the future to serve students in that, in that way also.
When I first looked at this, I thought, what the heck? People going to KU are not gonna, getting their credits transferred that they are everywhere else. And then I looked at the other colleges and I said, well, how come they can and we can't? But so, so can you kind of explain the, the discrepancy with KU? And I appreciate the other explanation, which makes a lot of sense for Fort Hays and Wichita State. So.
Several things with KU. KKU is known to have, you know, its own special and specific requirements. If you look at, for example, if you look at, this is not exactly your, your, your question, but it's along the lines of if you look at entrance requirements for KU, they, you know, they've redone statewide entrance requirements that are set by the Board of Regents. They're the same for every institution except for KU. So KU is known to have its own special and specific requirements and the, the credits that it transfers in and transcripts are really no different. They, they are notoriously difficult in the transfer process. And that is a known issue. But i- it is, so if you look at, at numbers, there are other institutions who have higher numbers, but it is rare that those numbers approach sixty. So even institutions that perform very strongly from KU or from, from another institutions, Coffeyville, transfers sixty-two hours to Fort Hays, but only thirty-six to KU. So i- it, that KU, you see a dip in all of the institutions. I think KU is also an expensive institution. We see fewer students go to KU. I, I have the, the other report pulled up in front of me. It's twenty-seven of our students went to KU. Out of a hundred.
This is dark ages, Marilyn. I transferred eighty-two from Garden City to KU. Now they only counted sixty-six or something like that for the major, but they took all my hours, even slide rule.
I know, Marilyn, when I was on the curriculum committee here, providing curriculum that some major college wanted, we just copied Garden City and liberals and they wouldn't accept ours. Said we didn't have the right person teach. Even though we had somebody with a master or doctorate degree in it. So it's been based on some of the chairs in those facilities that determine what's required or what the transfer.
So is this a K-Bor issue then, really?
It is. I mean, there, there's, there's significant conversation happening about, you know, right now and, and I think as part of this. And for the past several years, we've been focusing primarily at the state level on course-to-course transfer, on course equivalency. So if you take English Composition One in Garden City, it transfers English Composition across the board. Well, that's all well and good. What you start running into there though is, and some to what Dave was saying, you have department tests at the regents universities that make very specific determinations about how courses are going to come in. So just because a course may be equivalent and may not fit into a program, if I'm going into business, I've taken accounting two. We'll take the accounting two, but I still have to take a managerial accounting that will be needed for the program. So you're going to lose hours. The hours are going to come in. So where it becomes a, a K-Bor issue is really working towards more of what's called a program-to-program articulation. So if I have sixty hours that I've taken in Garden City, that block of sixty fits into the program study that I'm going into at whichever four-year school. What we are now focusing on here at Garden City is to do that on a statewide scale is a massive undertaking that's going to take several years. And K-Bor is working on, they're working in that direction. We're actually focusing on working on program, program articulations ourselves, trying to do more of that two-year, four-year agreement ourselves. Bring along the processes, K-Bor does that there, but we're not gonna wait the timeframe there that's going to take to do it on the statewide system. We're going to enter, we're going to enter into agreements with the four-year schools and start working on this program, program articulations ourselves. So, and I think that's, that's where some of it starts to come into play there. And the other, you know, there's a lot of examples out there, but KU is one that each of the other four-year institutions here in Kansas, if you have English One and English Two, your composition requirements are fulfilled and met at those institutions. KU requires an additional literature course on top of English Two. So, you know, there are just some, as Mark alluded to, some difficulties in working in that transfer process, particularly with KU. So not only because of cost, but because of difficulty in the transfer process, we're starting to see fewer students choosing KU.
I could add one item to that, which I think is an exciting development as a part of the statewide program-to-program, which would essentially mean that your bachelor's degree in business is the same at Wichita State as it is at KU, as it is at K-State. And as a part of establishing that, there, the committee, there's a committee currently working on a statewide general education package. And the benefit to that statewide education or general education package would be that students who get that gen ed package at a community college, when they transfer that to a four-year, it can't be unpackaged and say, well, there's forty credits, we don't like your comp two, so we'll take that out and we will take thirty-seven. That process, as it looks now, would not be allowed. So that would also improve as a part of that statewide program-to-program. It would improve the number of credits and eliminate some of that issue that we face at institutions like KU, where the university is happy to accept, for example, a comp two course, but the individual college or department inside the university might throw up a red flag and say, we need you to take a different course.
I might just add that Mark has recently just been appointed to the Transfer Articulation Council for the state, so we'll have representations.
I attend my first meeting tomorrow. So the, these are issues that we do track carefully. We also have Nicole Dick, who's Division Chair for Science and Math. She is serving on that Program-to-Program statewide committee, working on that general education package project. So we work very hard to stay current and involved in the conversation so we're not kind of caught unawares and we can be a part of, of, of better solutions for the state.
So the committee that you're on is organized by K A C C T or by K.
I don't know.
Great. Okay, cool. All right, Mark, as long as I've got you equipped, on number three, students will have the opportunities for advanced degrees. There was a comment on that you had identified some areas of improvement and.
Last line, I think.
The colleges identified areas for improvement will work on. Yeah, I was just, if, if you could just give a brief explanation of what you guys are working on in regards to the improvement plan.
Hey, JD two.
Very fascinating, Mark.
I just couldn't get myself unmuted in time. There are a few things that I can think of off the top of my head, and one of them is, is advising. We, we teach a, a course here called College Success and/or Career Success, but college is the, success is the transfer version. I know that our Director of Advising, Leslie Wenzel, has some robust ideas for how to reform that course and make it more, not just about success at Garden City Community College, but success at Garden City Community College and beyond. The other thing that I think is really, and it's, it's not necessarily brand new, but the Fort Hays State University Transfer Connect Program, where students who enroll at Garden City with the intent to transfer to Fort Hays, they're actually, they can sign up to be dual-advised, both by an advisor here and also a K or a, sorry, a Fort Hays advisor. And I think that helps the student kind of see not just the immediate goal in front of them, but also that long-term goal. There's a, a, a new aspect of the data that we have also that will allow us to look at GPAs by student major. And so that's, that's a new aspect and that's something that we can look at as a part of program reviews in the future. When our program reviews, five-year academic program reviews ask departments to look at and reflect on how their students are doing. When they leave Garden City Community College, that is additional increased data that can kind of help us target and pinpoint where there might be specific academic areas that we can work on improving student skills. And that, that gives you maybe a few answers for things we're looking at.
Thank you. I, um, as a longtime member on the board, I know that this particular indicator has been one that we've talked about several times and have been concerned about it. So I appreciate all of the information and I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this monitoring item? We're on page eighty-five then. The next monitoring report is asset protection. The president shall not make any purchases over twenty thousand dollars without competitive bids and do consideration regarding cost, quality and service and be any purchase under fifty thousand. The interpretation is listed there. Any questions, comments?
I, I would say the only thing is, is twenty thousand still. I guess we can, I mean, guess costs get up and things like that. Are we, are we having to do a lot of bids for things? I mean, we're, you know. We're over fifty. Yeah. I mean, are we, I mean, you know, is that, are those numbers relevant to the time? It's my base.
Is that set by statute?
Actually, they're, they're lower than the statute. And they're lower.
Um, and they're lower, lower than um the federal procurement language for grants. Which there, you know, there is some thought sometimes of tying, um, tying all that language to be the same. However, when you're, when you're looking at the, the procurement, and especially if you're dealing with a grant, you always have to go with the most conservative. So if, if a grant allows you purchases, which it does a federal grant, anything under a hundred and fifty thousand, that we say we have to bid at fifty, then we have to bid at fifty. So, um, you know, that's the only, that's the only thing that, um, right now, we haven't, um, if we get, when we get the Hispanic-serving institutional um grant, that might be a discussion that we have. Because, you know, up to, we haven't had a lot of, we, we had numerous grants, but they're more operating. But this will be a, you know, involve construction and those type of things, equipment. And so we might want to kind of study that a little bit to see if we might, the time might be appropriate to modernize that a little bit. Um, so.
In other words, raise.
But I think to your question, it's not impeding.
It's, it's not impeding. I just, I mean, it's one of those trust things that we can hold the president accountable for, you know, obviously more leniency one way or another, but I'm, my, my more look is, is it impeding us in getting the process going because it's fifty thousand where it should be sixty thousand, you know, or, or are we hitting the benchmark because of rising costs? And that's my only question. But if you don't think it's impeding, then I don't have any reason to say that.
It don't take much to get twenty thousand.
Well, that's, it doesn't take much to get twenty or fifty thousand dollars anymore, especially when you're talking any kind of, yeah.
And our purchasing policy just have, you know, we require competitive information over ten thousand, not formally solicited, but just the proof of, you know, this is the best deal type thing. Um, I think that's a little low myself, but you know, quite honestly, nobody's screaming and we have a, we have a lot of plates and anything. One that, but appreciate you asking.
Yeah, okay.
I wouldn't think it would hurt us to take a hard look at this, not quite now, but sometime within the next two, three months. You're going to be getting into a lot of stuff, as you said. And if we can make it a little easier, you don't have to go for bids on nickel and dime stuff that you would have to. My trust is in you folks anyway.
Well, I think if it would be something, it'd be, I mean, I, I appreciate it in two or three months, but this is what, just a yearly thing that we look at? I mean, not that we couldn't bring it back, but I mean, now would be the time if you want to discuss or.
Well, I think I was kind of concerned because this didn't align with our purchasing policy. And then Ryan explained that it's that is, that's by design because, um, so, you know, but you know, as far as, so we have those purchasing limits within college policy. What you all choose to look at is my understanding is set in.
President, anything over twenty.
Yeah, so.
We just review this on a annual basis?
It seems like I have, I reach out to Debbie twice a year to get some information. I was gonna say this one's.
So, yeah, next month we, we review asset protection.
I, the only thing maybe that I would ask is if we, I, I, there again, it's kind of different from college, but you know, where are the, the colleges, what's the standard average? I know this is a little different because this is executive limitation. This is, I mean, i- it not, not necessarily dealing with the college side of things, but I just, I don't know.
And we can bring it in there to show where the alignment is there based on statute.
Yeah, yeah.
Federal standards.
Just, just get a little better idea. I, I mean, I, if it's not impeding, I don't think it's any necessarily problem, but I don't want to get it to the point where, you know, like I said, nickel and diamond or, or micromanaging because of things that should be just absolute.
So you can bring us more information at the next meeting and we can review.
The purchasing policy and all of that, yeah.
Yeah.
There's more that enters into it than just us deciding, yeah, let's change it to fifty.
Right.
Right. So this, remember, this is about reporting.
Yeah.
Back to the board, the purchases, the actual purchasing policy is another set of.
Yeah. And so that comes up more like, that comes up more like in the audit and not following that and.
Yeah.
Intermingle.
I mean, if we, we both need to make sure that we're um following both and working collaborative. And so, you know, because he doesn't have to, this is not Ryan's character. However, he wanted to just do something under twenty thousand dollars that's, you don't have to know about, but we want three bids. I mean, he could say, no, just do it. I want this kind and even though, but that isn't how he operates. Right.
But I appreciate the, the devil's advocate.
No, I mean, you know, it's all good conversation.
Conversation. Okay. So, um, asset protection, we will review the language next time, okay? All right, page eighty-six, um, compensation and benefits for the president. There's three, right?
Yes.
Pretty simple. Any, any comments or questions? We just reviewed the contract or everything is kosher. Um, I'm just saying, we're accepting these monitored reports as presented. Questions? All right, party, um, agenda item four, reviewing our monitoring report, looking at the treatment of people that we talked about last. Page ten of the policy.
Should be a new one.
It's my new one, so.
March next, Tuesday.
So one through four is, um, the information that were the indicators that we've been familiar with. Number five and number six, we added, or I should say number six.
Now we have five.
Yeah. Okay, um. I don't have, the only thing that I was thinking about as I was looking at this was that as a new board member coming on, they might not understand what diversity, equity and inclusion means. And I thought that we should include the definition of that. So I asked President Ruda about it and the committee that's been formed had a working definition that was in front of you. I'm not going to ask you to approve it, but just take a look at it and we can talk about this by the next meeting.
So where does this fit into the policy manual? Like at the top for, I mean, I don't, because you don't.
Just go in the student handbook or? Oh, the government.
No, this is, I'm thinking policy governance.
This would be, I mean, uh, I mean, student handbook could have their own, but I think if we're going to have some but I just don't know where we put it. Counsel looking at where this would be.
Well, so this is, this is actually the charter from our D E I committee here on campus. So this is, this is what's been developed there is, is their charge, their charter, uh, of the definitions that, that are bound for campus that we follow. What leads into the work that we do on the D E I initiatives. So it doesn't, doesn't fall into policy per se there. This is more of terminology and definitions of terminology for the working group or the committee that's charged with this initiative.
I know that, you know, talking about new board members, but what about the students? If they don't understand it, where would it go? How would it get out to them?
Yeah, so, great question. So then, as Mark was talking about there, within college success and work success, the, the courses that we teach there for all new students who are coming in is where we talk about the ends. You know, we talk about cultural diversity, social responsibility, and we're specifically outlining what those, you know, what those academic ends are. But within that is where we're talking about diversity, equity, inclusion. The definitions we have there, you know, as far as how everything kind of coincides. We've got work there as well. Uh, it'll also be in part of student government. So as we're talking about activities, events, different things that we may be looking at there. Where does that align? Where does that fall into diversity, equity, inclusion work? So these definitions will be kind of the standard basis that we use that, that helps guide student activities programming. It's also incorporated into our orientation and our college success forces on that aspect.
You know, Marilyn, I just, just brainstorming. Maybe would be better suited under the board job description. We put a, remember, if you remember, we put it into seven on page twenty, advocate the values of diversity, multiculturalism, um, and compassion, respect to welcome all people, and put a subset A and just define that. And then that's more in the board's job description. And it just, I, something would flow better than, than here because this is more, this more for charge of Ryan.
Right.
And, and there again, if you have it over here, I realize it's in the board's job description, but we can always refer back to, well, that's the same thing we're employing President Ruda to, I mean, and especially since it's new.
On page twenty, you got number seven.
That's why I say, and, and seven.
You've got M for nine.
And I think if you, I don't know if, I don't know policy-wise, if it would be most appropriate, just put subsection A and just put the definition or, or, or something that we want to further define. I, I think, I don't know, that's something. If you want something in there.
I, I appreciate your guys' opinions about this. Um, it's, it's a buzz topic.
Yeah.
Right now. And I just thought that as new board members come on.
Yeah.
We I wanted it to be understandable to them.
Right. I think it's still a, well, you, it's still a, like you said, it's buzzwords, but it's still being defined and it's, it's, I think, I think we really don't know all what it encompasses, but it's definitely something that's going to be in the forefront in the next, you know, in the future, very much so. I mean, it's already here, but it's that much more. And, but I, I agree. I think having something more of a definition would be a better idea.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, to your point there, I think if a new board member is coming on there, where they want to look at their first as far as what their charge and their responsibilities are with their policy government squared out.
Yeah.
Board member responsibilities. I mean, I, I think that's that's an ideal place here where those definitions are followed.
Or maybe this would be part of the handbook?
Well, there isn't. We do have, I, I think, yeah, a handbook would be definitely most appropriate and easy, but I.
We are going to talk about this at our board retreat as well. So we could get a little more information on that, but um why don't you think about it? And if you have ideas that you'd like to jot down, share them by email and bring it back to the next board meeting. But I like your idea of putting it under board job description because it is, I'm talking about from us.
Yeah.
As well as.
As policy. Yeah, directing chair.
Right. Does anybody else have any language suggestions for treatment of people? Page ten.
I think we went over, there were the last couple of times.
Last, yeah, it's been a topic.
Have to kind of relook at or at least find tune.
Okay. Work in progress, guys. Work in progress. All right, moving on, um, item five.
Can we make a five-minute break?
Sure, sure. Let's do a five-minute nature break here.
I'm starting to walk like him and I had both my knees to. Just kidding.
Right, Beth.
Well. Kind of happens. Sometimes. I'm spying. Not by as much as they used to, so I just.
It slows down in the summer.
Oh, I slow down.
I slow down.
Don't worry, guys. I'm still here.
Okay. We'll continue behaving then. Yeah, that's the. We can start and move. Some of the things from Calis into.
Oh. Okay.
So probably. Meantime, there's, I mean, I guess we could look and see what we have in our handbook here right now compared to Calis.
Okay.
That's a lot of what we're looking for. It's just starting to build our own and then deal with. Needs to be added.
Okay.
If there are, I mean, I guess what we could do there, Calis, is take a look and see if there are general general things that have application or specific to Calis. Start bringing those in there to. Our handbook. There's some that are more specific that we need to.
I like, like a note that I mentioned last month. There's always a hell of a water between the two journals.
Yeah, we, no, we mentioned it there. I know you mentioned it there too.
Oh, I probably did last time.
Yeah, you did. Yeah.
My knees are here for it too, you guys. Who's ready? Chanda? She's still there. She's still there. All right, we're back in session. We are on item five. There's no comments from the public, right? Okay, present reports.
Several things, just to update or go through with you on it. This should be an opportune time to just provide some updates on the various projects that we have going on across campus. And so rip work on the Brock Buster Suites as well as the Deep Act started on June second. Continuing on both of those ripping projects. Have also initiated some tuck winning mortar work on various buildings. We've started with the athletic complex and will be moving to other campus buildings throughout this summer. As you can see from the interior of campus, the tunnel caps and hydraulic water pipes are well under the way. Project is, is on track there. We have management meetings on Fridays there with each of the construction companies. Gibson Man Steady Car Michael and ourselves. So they had started in the middle of the quad, pulled up the concrete above the tunnels in the middle of the quad so that T-Drill would be able to go in and start working on pipe replacement there in the middle. And then we transitioned over to the academic building on the south side of campus. And we're going to start working from the academic building back to the north on the concrete. So a lot of demo there around the academic buildings been done on sidewalks and the concrete. And they will actually start looking for the new con, the, the new concrete here this week. So hopefully the rain stays away so that we'll be able to do that. But also, you know, for our economy, we need the rain there as well, so. Six one half dozen of the other.
Right.
The chairs, the replacement chairs for fine arts have been ordered. Actually plan to remove the chairs, existing chairs here this June, and then we'll be replacing carpets this month as well, as well as painting the interior walls and the auditorium. And then the installation of the new chairs will, will be in July. So that project's on track and everything is progressing on, on that end. The construction of offices that we have in the library for the newly formed Fort Hayes State University Transfer Center at Garden City is on track. Actually went through that project there yesterday with some of the Fort Hayes administration. And that project will actually be completed here in the next two weeks where they can start to move their, begin moving their offices and, and be in their offices here by the middle of July there it looks like. A lot of the painting, we have several different projects over in the doors there as far as sanding and painting on the exterior of both the east units, the apartments and then the west hall windows. So those projects, they actually, these units have, have been completed and painting continues on apartments in the west hall. The replacement computers for employees should be arriving here mid-June. So those, those computers will arrive here mid-June and then IT will begin starting to get those set up and distributed there at that point. The second phase of the access control installation will begin here in, in the next week. So that process is well underway there to start bringing all of our exterior doors into alignment with the access control. And then the west hall ventilation upgrade has began as well as the warm hot water replacement and just general dormant toward repairs that we're making there as well. So significant amount of, of work and projects that are going on there. I just wanted to update the board on where those projects stood here at this point. The other item that I had that I just want to kind of walk through and, and reference there for, for the board there has to do with changes that will be in effect here with new legislation that was passed this, this last session referencing Senate Bill thirteen. So as, as we're sitting in mid-June and preparing for end of year, end of fiscal year, preparing for start of next year budget planning and, and setting the budget. Senate Bill thirteen will have some, some impact there on this process. So I just wanted to walk the board through. So Senate Bill thirteen was, was approved and signed into a law there that essentially establishes a, what's called a revenue neutral rate. So the intent and the premise with this particular bill there is for taxing entities to be able to set a revenue neutral rate for each taxing entity that does not, jump in here if I misspeak, does not exceed the mill rate from the previous year. So the intent is, is that the mill rate that we've, we've set for this current year will not be exceeded for next year. Well, the mill rate is driven by your valuation. So, you know, really at the end of the day, what you're looking at and what taxing entities are looking at is the dollar amount that's generated for your budget, not necessarily what, what the mill rate is. But the way that Senate Bill thirteen is written is that revenue, revenue neutral rate is driven specifically off of that mill, that mill rate. So there's some intricacies that will come with this there. And, and I wanted to kind of, Carla and I have talked about this and then she sat in on several, several webinars there from the business officer standpoint as far as some of the changes that will impact budget planning as we go into this next year. But specifically, we've kind of outlined dates and just wanted to kind of go through those that are with you as far as what the changes are going to be. So here on, on June twenty ninth, we will continue as planned there with the board retreat. And we'll still be able to, to have information that we presented to the board there that starts to have those preliminary conversations for what we'll be looking at as we go into July for the board to have a working budget that they review and adopt. So leading in from that June twenty ninth board retreat then, we would present the board still with a working budget for approval on July thirteenth at the board meeting. And then following that there on July fourteenth, we would have to also notify the county clerk that it is our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And I will explain why that is. So if we do not indicate that our intent is to exceed the revenue neutral rate, all we are going to be receiving as of June fifteenth from the county clerk is what our estimated property valuation is wanting to be. So we're going to be basing our budget, we're going to be basing, you know, what we present to you off of this estimated valuation. If by what is written into Senate Bill thirteen, if we do not give notice to the county clerk that we intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate when the actual valuation comes in in November, if valuation is lower and we have not given notice to the county clerk that we intend to exceed our revenue neutral rate, that mill rate. If the valuation is lower, that means our mill rate will generate less dollars. So on July fourteenth, we will, and all taxing entities are, are going to do the same thing. We will give notice to the county clerk that it's our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate so that in November, pending whatever valuation comes in, that we have ability to adjust the mill rate. Our intent is that the dollars that we generate this year will be the same dollars we generate next year. So.
And then it's the valuation to turn up higher.
Correct. And then the rate could go up, yeah. So I, I think, let me get pregnant if I'm wrong here, but from a taxpayer standpoint there, what we need to be talking and, and discussing there is the dollars that we're letting this year. Our intent at the college is that the dollars will match next year. So, correct.
All right, I mean, because, I mean, the mill rate's just a, the result of an equation. And so, but I think, you know, mill rates, I don't know why people get all. They talk about those seems to be more frequently.
It's easier because it's a smaller measure.
Right.
And it has just an arbitrary number tied to it. And they don't have to worry about the other things.
Right.
And there's a lot of taxes.
And there's, and there's tons of other things going, you know, for instance, if, you know, if the county, in our situation, if the county has, you know, entered into neighborhood revitalizations, those type of things that are, you know, subtracted from your valuation or not, yeah, they're subtracting from your valuation and they're subtracting from your distribution. Well, you know, that in the long term, that's going to be positive for our community. But if, you know, you know, you've really got to be aware of all of those estimates if somebody's appealing, you know, their valuation, those kind of things. So it's, the State Municipality Office has actually went around to all the different taxing entities or has conducted webinars with many, you know, school districts, colleges, city, you know, cities, whatever. And, you know, their recommendation is to, don't, don't put yourself in a hole where depending on the, the, where the valuation comes in so that you can not end up with fewer dollars than expected. So when they, when this bill first started being discussed, it was, it was on the dollars. And then somehow it got, so it was just like if you're, you know, if you're the dollars that you're collecting or it's going to be the neutral, but it went to the rate.
Probably the biggest.
No, I'm done.
Probably the biggest change that we will see here at board level. So again, go back to our slide board meeting there. Board will be presented with a working budget that will be reviewed and approved. The difference from years past then is then we will go through and ten days prior to the August meeting, we will publish and then in August have the open hearing, be able to have the hearing and then approve the budget in August. The change that will happen from this year there with, with this new Senate bill then is actually the way it's written, between August twentieth and September twentieth is the timeframe that they have indicated that you have the ability to have the hearing for the revenue neutral hearing as well as the budget hearings. So you cannot have a budget hearing any earlier than August twentieth. So as we've looked at calendars, Carla and I have looked at calendars, what we're, what we're proposing and looking at there is actually that the revenue neutral hearing as well as the budget hearing will be at our September board meeting instead of, instead of August. So our work to publish for the revenue neutral hearing as well as publishing the working budget will be done ten days prior to the September board meeting so that we align with the dates and the new legislation. And then following that, there's a, once adoption of the budget happens and certified with the county clerk as, as usual, so.
And those public hearings can be the same?
And they hold, well, the same day, we'll just, we'll do like.
Do you have to do one and the other, the other one?
Okay. And they're, they will be providing us with some forms and, you know, they've got to redo all the budget forms and. I mean, so in reality, we, you know, our budget's really not finalized until October first. So, so you know, you. Quarter of the year.
To change your, change your fiscal year to match.
No, they do change. So it's divided. All the schools.
Right.
All the schools are on July of June. All the cities, what county's on?
They're on January.
They're on calendar.
Yeah.
Says they're on October.
So, yeah. But, well, we have, there, I mean, there's a lot of, of people out there.
Yeah.
Discussing and.
But anyways, just wanted to kind of highlight the, the change in timelines and some of the things that we'll update as we, as we hear and know it more. But we'll continue forward with things as planned on the budget retreat and continue to have those conversations.
And budget retreats at twenty ninth June.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say that we'll probably get questions about this as, as it approaches. So start to feel comfortable about how you, how you're going to speak to it.
Yeah, I think the best way to, the best way to explain it in my mind there is, is we're looking at it strictly on the fiscal, on the fiscal number. So our, our intent as a college, the one we're going to recommend is board's, board's choice on action is that the dollars we've left this year will be consistent with what we request for next year. So.
We'll have a better, I'm sorry, Brian, we'll have a better idea once we get the estimated valuation. I'm going to do a little, probably a five year study to actually see how. I know that some years there's been quite a bit of variance between the estimate and the final and just kind of looking to see, we get old trend information to. See what's going on there.
That would be interesting.
But yeah, if there's questions that come up or things that you hear that you need more information on as far as how to answer those questions.
The one thing that Brian didn't mention that is being waived this year. So if it's not changed, if it's not changed during this next year, what will happen is all of the taxing entities who say they're going to, you know, assess above the revenue or the new revenue, the RNR, another revenue neutral rate. The county clerk will do a mailing to all registered voters, all registered voters. And I think, you know, we publish all this stuff in the paper anyway, but some of us are kind of thinking that a little bit of this is driven because of the lack of, you know, newspapers are, you know, falling away and trying to increase transparency. And then there's other, others of us that have a theory that people aren't going to look at it. It's just going to be a piece of junk mail because that's what everybody gets in the mail is junk mail. So I don't know, but, but the bottom line is it's going to be a lot of work at county level.
And that cost for the coast cards would be that's along to the taxing.
Yeah. So we don't think of that.
Only other thing that I had there that's separate from that topic was, was again, just really in, in a lot of it there from what John's presented acknowledging Carla for the work that she's done on the standard before rating because that, that had a very direct correlation to the rates that we have on COP and what John presented tonight there. So appreciate your work on that.
Thank you. Pleasure. How was this?
Oh, you know, they send you questions and then you work those out and you collect. You know, they, they do. You know, you got to do the top ten taxpayers and anticipate it. You know, there's a lot of projections, but I, any county has a lot of good resources that you just pull from. And so, you know, it's just a lot of telling your story. And I'm not afraid to, someone wants to tell the story. So it's, you know, it's just conversation. But, and we were fortunate, the gentleman that I visited with, had worked with John for years. And he tells a funny story that standard reporters thought they were getting a little too cozy so they bet Brian on some other business or whatever. But that wasn't the case. It was just that. But, that wasn't the case, it was just that there was a lot of, you know, a lot of transactions and so. Anyway, so it was, yeah, it's a lot of work, but it's worth it. I mean, it's just.
Thank you.
Sure.
Incidental information? Any questions about that or comments? All right, item D, report from any county economic development?
Not much happening, still talking about unemployment rates and hard time employees. And discussing whether the unemployment benefits are because of it or not.
Item E, K A C C T report?
I do have one. We did have a Zoom meeting on Saturday morning, and evidently, some of the boards, I don't know, it was right after the president's meeting, we got this. So evidently, some of the boards maybe thought they weren't getting enough information, so I'm supposed to talk to you for at least a couple hours here? Not really. Anyway, I made, they sent out 10 bullets and make sure that, call them, anybody else, oh, Shannon. Anyway, instead, I have an information packet, just like that. And I thought, instead of going through all of it, I would give you some highlights. And if there's any of these 10 that you want more information, I'll make you copies or whatever. The copies in this meeting recap, I just, I'm going to just mention a few of them. I gave you copies of the meeting recap, the G C, or the community college bu- budget request, the pro bowl's budget for '22, the '21-'22 K A C C T budgets, or dues, excuse me, the Kansas Promise Scholarship, I made you a copy that we've talked and talked and talked about it. This gives you the, and I've got pages more that talks about each one of, but I just thought, you might like to see this. And then, the final thing they sent us was, if you are in, if you know of anybody that's interested in becoming a community college trustee, here's what you need to know, and I mean, we're all on it, and we know. But I thought for any future references, this might be a good thing for Ryan's office to have in the future, in case. So, the comments, I'm just going to give you a few here. Contracts were renewed for Marty Fisher, who is the accounting, does accounting services for the Committee College Trustees Association, and then divided not only associates or lobbyists, and they were given a 3% increase for next year. Oh, and if I make any mistakes or you don't understand, Ryan's going to explain it to you. The Kansas Promise Act, Senator Molly Baumgartner covered this pretty much in detail. I remember when, when I first met Molly, she was a trustee at Johnson County Community College. Highly respected, I think, in, in, in the state. 10 million funding for this year, and then 10, 10 million funding for next year. One of the things, part of this funding for the Promise Act, the students have to completed the A C T testing for all Kansas students, and I think that's a requirement. And high school students, this is part of the requirements. So, Senate Bill 63 passed, and that is the A C T portions, like, there's A C T assessment, there's A C T pre-assessment, there's A C T work keys and things like that. All those would be, by this Senate Bill 63, will be provided for the seniors in the Kansas high schools at no charge to them. The, the Senate Bill 32, school districts that this passed is paying their students for dual credits, and it also requires tuition waiver for foster children. The House Bill 2175 did not pass, I was going to talk to you about that just for a second, because I talked to you about earlier. This is the Wayne East Street Tech.
Beasley.
Beasley, I, I, I'm throwing out. Yeah, anyway, that's, that's something, I talked to you earlier about that. That's a tech thing in, in Lawrence that is not approved, I mean, is not accredited. And what they were trying to do was hang on with the approved technical, and to get state money and so forth. That did not pass, and that's a good thing. House Bill 2264, that's that student athlete made money on their images. That, that is, they think that will come up eventually. Yeah. Anyway, then, the American Family Plan, I have a copy of that if you want, I did not make it copies of it. That's the President's Family Plan. Part of it is, you've heard about the community colleges would be tuition-free or regular bills. There is a slight problem in Kansas, and help me if I'm not saying this right. Kansas community colleges are locally well-earned, and so they could not qualify the way it's written, because the money is sent to the state and from the feds. But, the thing that would make this essentially free for community colleges, if that Pell Grant gets doubled. Now, right now, it's going to be up probably 30 to 40%, but it's not doubled yet. So, anyway.
Well, the other, the other reason that they're with, with the tuition free, the way it is right now there too, is that it is a 75% federal funded, 25% state funded. And, so the thought, the merit behind it there is, is that there's not a, not a fiscal note at the state level to be able to cover that 25%. You know, sustainability, I question sustainability on that.
Certainly, it's got to come from somewhere. Instead of the state, because you have the money. Lying in excess reserves, right?
Anyway, state budgets tiered, no cuts, I don't, can't remember what they said about the non-tiered. Senate Bill 155, budget 2.1 million for the current year, 8.3 million for next year, hopefully it will be fully funded. Any questions? Good, bye. Anyway, if you'd like information on any of this, I have the whole packet there, but you didn't need a crash course in a time, so.
Thanks, that's a lot to digest and absorb and regurgitate. Thank you.
I tell you, one thing Ryan and I, and we have mentioned this before, our local girl does well with the community colleges. She, she has shot down, no, what am I going to say? She has saved us from shootouts from other state agencies. I think she does well with us, where any time the border regions is trying to shoot us down or whatever, she's, she's very good.
Essentially, highly connected.
Yes. Thank you.
No, thank you. There's no S G A report, you have a report come faculty senate.
See them, see them all.
Give that to Jody so she can digest what I tried to say.
Thank you.
All right, we are on accreditation update.
We do have that.
You guys promote Mark there, give him.
Hey there, I apologize for that delay.
Wait, yeah.
I was, oh, I need the ability to share screen, please. Jody, would you mind checking? I would appreciate it, thank you.
Can you promote Mark so he can share his screen? Will he have handouts, Mark, if he can't, if they can't make it?
Yes, we'll do that. I know I am promoted, I just, when I click share screen, it says, oh, it says, welcome, please share your screen. So, again, these are, we, we try and keep, I try and keep these updates to five minutes or less. I will not meet that goal tonight, but I do recognize I'm the last thing between you and the end of the board meeting. These presentations, once again, are kind of designed just to keep you informed about what we're working on in terms of our upcoming accreditation visit in November of 2022, and keeping you informed about what that process looks like and what our argument will look like for keeping our accreditation in good standing. So, in our last meeting, in May, actually, we had talked about going through some of these most frequently cited core component issues. In May, we talked about four B, and today we'll talk about four A, which is the second most commonly cited core component. So, again, these are just a review, going through these to talk through it in some really nice ways, it serves as an accountability check for us to make sure that we're keeping up on the work of getting through this successfully. But it's also good information for you all, and provides an opportunity for you to ask any questions that you might have. Four A is a long one. We will, I won't read the entire screen here to you, we'll go through, well, I'll, I'll read this first part, criterion four overall is just about the institution demonstrates responsibility for the quality of its educational programs, learning environments, and support services, and it evaluates their effectiveness for student learning through processes designed to promote continuous improvement. So four A has six different components, we're going to go through just some examples of where we are pulling the evidence, where we will pull the evidence from. And H L C, again, is really focused on this culture of evidence. We don't get to say, just, just say that we're doing it, we also have to provide evidence that they can see of our process and our results. So, we'll go through each of these, two and three, we'll go through in a group together. But number one is, the four A is all about the institution ensures the quality of its educational offerings, and one asks us specifically to maintain a practice of regular program reviews and to act on the findings from those program reviews. So, even before I arrived, as a part of the last accreditation visit, the institution developed a robust program review process for academic and non-academic programs. And that cycle of work includes those departments coming to you around October to do a short presentation to the Board of Trustees about the things that they're finding. And we think that's an important part of closing the loop and providing evidence that the institution, from top to bottom, is informed about the things that we are finding in this review cycle. So, some examples, again, we're required to provide examples of changes, not just that we do them, but changes that we have made. So I went back and just pulled, for this presentation, I pulled the first two program reviews off of a stack from, I believe, 2017. And in the 2017, on the academic side, the John Deere program showed that really the program was stuck and could not grow more without an institutional investment in facilities. And as you all know, the, the program moved to the annex, a significant expansion of space. And in, we are looking at for fall 2021, the largest fall class ever. The last I heard, it was at 32, which is the largest we've ever had. And another part of that is, we achieved platinum status because of, in no small part, those institutional investments that were really shown and provided evidence for and data for to back up in, in that program review. On the non-academic side, same thing in advising, that is, that advising program review indicated that if we had a college-wide scheduling software that would provide a good streamlining of, of services for students, we now have that, we now have a director of advising position, and we now have also rolled out the student planning module as an addition to colleague. So, again, just providing examples of using the information provided and discovered in program review. The other thing that we're working on for fall is modifying our strategic planning process so that as departments go through these program reviews, they can develop initiatives based on their data. And those initiatives can be plugged directly into the strategic plan so that every department can feel some ownership in using this, this data for continuous improvement and really making an impact in direction of the institution. The next one here is two and three, which really state that we control the quality of the credit that we award and we transcript for students. And through or for that, we would talk about that we participate in the statewide articulation process, which is run through the Kansas Board of Regents, it's part of that transfer and articulation council we talked about earlier. We would have minutes from those meetings. We also would have our institutional transfer credit policy and our credit for prior learning policy. And those policies control, provide standards for how we award credit, both internally and credit that we transfer in for students. So we would refer to those policies to provide evidence of our following these practices. And number four, the institution maintains and exercises authority over the prerequisites for courses, the rigor of courses, expectations for student learning, access to learning resources, and faculty qualifications. And it does that not only on our on-campus, face-to-face programs, but all of our programs, including our dual-credit high school programs. So we have institutionally a curriculum development policy that lays out that curriculum is developed by faculty content experts in specific curriculum areas. It is approved by a curriculum and instruction committee, that committee is led by, is faculty-driven. And so, inside of those committee minutes, we would have sample syllabi, we would have evidence of course outcomes, student learning outcomes being approved, we would have evidence of, of faculty approving programs. We also, as a part of ensuring that we're maintaining quality across all of our delivery modes and locations, including dual credit, we have revamped our part-time evaluation process. And so we would have evidence and samples of that part-time evaluation process to demonstrate that we have rigor, the same level of rigor, across all, for example, comp one classrooms, whether they're delivered face-to-face on campus, online, through Zoom, through dual credit in the high school setting. The fifth one, this one's shorter, we're maintaining specialized accreditation for programs as appropriate to its educational purposes. And this is, is not a change from the previous assurance argument, we have external accreditation for paramedic, R N L P and cosmetology, we would just provide evidence that those accreditations have been maintained in good standing. We're almost done, six asks that we evaluate the success of our graduates. We ensure that the credentials it represents as preparation for advanced study or employment accomplish those purposes. So that's where we see the, the importance of mining this data annually for the academic advancement ends report that you all reviewed this evening. It allows us to look at how students do once they leave our institution, and that's one really important piece of evidence. We can also look in the technical programs, we can look at things like licensure pass rates, the NCLEX pass rate, for example. We, each of those programs has some method for tracking students after they leave the institution. We also have record of industry. We also have record of industry involvement and feedback changing our curriculum for continuous improvement based on the feedback of those industry partners that work with our faculty and our programs routinely. So, that is a ton of information, a whole lot of words. The overall point of, of going through these, again, is just to provide you some idea of where we're pulling evidence as we work through this assurance argument. And, and the, just to provide that information for you. I'm happy to answer any questions or comments that you might have.
Mark, it's Marilyn. An example of a question that might come to the board about program review. Can you think of one?
Ryan might have an example also, as I'm thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I think just from, just from prior visits, I mean, the question would arise here as far as how is the board informed of program review process with findings that are derived from program reviews? The answer would be, and we could provide evidence here, that the programs come in there with some of the reviews annually that outline that was presented by the respective departments to the board. By and large, I mean, that seems to be the biggest thing is they, they want to know, how's the circle being closed? We're collecting this. How's it being reported to the board? And then in turn, what's the board, how is the board using it?
Referring back to, you know, like, say, how is it being used, like, going back in the strategic planning and using that to have foresight of, you know, increasing the John Deere program or, or dissolving certain things or, or increasing that, I think, that kind of whole circle, just those three. How are we receiving it? What are we doing with it?
And this, the programs are on a five-year cycle, right? So, every year, we're going to hear program review, a couple of.
Right.
In five years, it starts over.
What I've seen in our experience of HLC, I have a lot more comfort today with Mark and the ability that he is showing me in keeping us where we need to be with that, not just in the progress that this institution's made since we became on probation. And I know Jackie, that's helped a lot in doing that. I'm a lot more comfortable today than I was three years ago.
Feels better.
It does.
Well, and these are processes that you have to show sustainability. So, you know, we may have put these processes in two years ago. Jack leaves, how are we ensuring that these processes continue after a certain employee leaves? Well, you know, that's, those are the questions that you have to answer there to the site team is, it's well, you had this two years ago. What are you doing today? What are you doing to show continuous improvement? How is, how are these processes being sustained as we go forward?
You can talk the talk a whole lot better than I can.
Yeah.
I would add to that, thinking, I'm just, my strength and skill is in connecting dots that, that might already exist. And so, you know, another way of thinking about continuous improvement is really that the academic-focused ends that you all ask us to provide annual evidence of. So, as a board, you are structured to not let us lose focus on those ends. And I think that's another really strong component that could come up in conversations around quality of academic programs, rigor of academic programs. You won't let us, we saw language tonight in the, the HLC criterion that, that says we maintain the quality of our programs so that students can transfer and continue on. And you have a report that we are required to provide data on annually. And every year that I have presented that report, you have had robust questions about it. So, I think that that's a strength of the board structure here. Thank you for my, allowing my unsolicited comment.
Anytime, Mark.
Thank you. We appreciate this. This is good stuff tonight. Thank you. Any other questions for Mark or President Ruda?
No questions for Mark there, but I do want to just note, Earl was on the call. She had no report. But she was listening in there. She just wanted to let us know that she didn't forget about the meeting. But has no report.
Okay. All right. Item six, ownership linkage. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share?
On the list that Ryan gave out, or no, that we were, with the Advisory Board Council meeting dates, I think last meeting, we talked about having a board member pick one or them pick us or whatever. So, I bring our attention to that. The other thing I have, the Chamber Breakfast, it says March and April of 2022 are available. If we would do April, that's Community College Month. And that would be a good one for us. So, that's just my suggestion.
From last month, we talked about that a board member would attend the Advisory Board Council meeting dates for meetings. And that's, Jody provided this list for us. So, if there's any of these that you would like to attend?
I don't have that list, because Marilyn, I know you've got my number. Could you, like, take a picture and screenshot, send that to me?
We're just gonna put you on all of them.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I will do.
Yeah, you might do that too, but I'll send it to her.
I can probably do rolling and pack and the signs. Rolling and the backside.
I can be a carpenter.
I'm assuming automotive's on there somewhere. I'd be glad to take that.
Oh, that's a good one for you.
John Deere?
Not yet.
I'll do that.
Marilyn, take your pick, and then I'll do what's left over.
I just emailed it to Shanda.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Just emailed you the list. I don't know if you have access to that or not.
As long as I don't lose this trying to access it.
So, I'll do nursing. And I'll do yeah, I'll do cosmetology.
Okay, it looks like the leftover ones are computer science and industrial maintenance. I'll take those two, and then whatever Shanda wants to do.
She wants to do automotive.
Yeah.
She wants to fill in or, and I would say, I mean.
Yeah, I'll do automotive and whatever, whatever else is needed. I obviously have a little experience in any of the others, but.
I would also just, you know, at least we have our grounds covered of one being there, but if you want to go to something else, I think all the more the merrier, you know, especially something that you're not familiar with or maybe interested in, knowing a little bit more.
And Leonard, do you pick John Deere?
Yeah, and what, like saying that would, I think, increase morale if they show that more than one trustee can in. I think it would be a costly thing.
But I do like the, in Chamber Breakfast, and I think a business after hours, you know, the football game, I think it's a, I think those are really great opportunities and, and good advertising too.
Thanks. We got that. So, is everybody okay with picking the April meeting, April breakfast? And we, we are all encouraged to attend.
We actually get a chance to do a short presentation on whatever topic we want to go to college.
We can add to this as we go along, can't we? If you want to, because I'm not real, there are probably some others on there I'd like to go to. Maybe time to think about it.
Okay. The September 25th first home football game is the Business After Hours.
Yeah.
So, I'll be there. So, is that the amazing one? So, that September 25th, Jeremy Jiggett is going, is joining in, and they're going to make a big touchy moment on that.
Downwind BA, Downwind BA, both will join scholarships as well.
I think that's a big deal. And then we have the opportunity to be featured on other ones. Is that what you can, if you choose to, and you can make anything that you want to work with the businesses.
I think it'd be nice to do something in, in the downwind room sometimes. I mean, just maybe the board on after-hours thing. I mean, outside of a event, you know, because some people just may not want to go to a football game. Or some people may not want to be around that time where, if it's an after-hours thing, that, you know, I, I just, I, again, we can look at it down the road, but I think something
Yeah.
a little nice to have in the downwind room.
The, the presence, the presence thing is, that was very nice. And that, I, I was thinking as, as we were invited to that, that that, that is kind of what some Business After Hours are known. I mean, I went down to the water molder and some of the others.
Yeah, it's not a reception.
Did that happen? The president's?
Yeah, you had.
Yeah, we hosted him last Thursday and Friday here on campus.
We all had.
I think I missed the emails. I don't know.
Well, I ate, I ate for you.
Okay.
I mean, there were stations with different things. That was very nice. It's too bad I had to leave early to go to van tractors.
Maybe we'll come back to that. Coming back to the all right. The July meeting, so we have the two board retreats coming up.
And they're going to be in this room, right?
Yes. And they're going to be still virtual. However, the July board meeting will be an open meeting. And so, the public can come in and
I would be back to it.
Back to the downwind, right? And then I had a question. Are, you know, we have, you mentioned new computers. We still have our
Yeah.
our little laptops that do we, are we going to go back to them or are we going to keep just doing?
Your pleasure. The table print.
I hate to always print the job. They're nice to have, but I mean.
I prefer printing. I want a hard copy that I care about use in the computer or the laptop.
Do you have any reason to use the computer?
Okay.
Especially my tribal homes.
And I can carry the computer.
Yeah, because it's just.
Yeah, we can rework it over to student labs.
Okay. So, at some point, bring your computer in.
I think it's only.
Just you and me?
No, we all got them.
Yeah. If you needed, it's yours if you.
I, I think somebody else can use it. All right. So, that brings us back to what I was trying to decide. Do you want to pick another Thursday month of the month for the after-hours? Do you have an idea?
I would say just, I mean, I don't think, I mean, maybe when there's less chaos or, I mean, I don't know. I mean, you know, is it better than
Yeah, because the other.
January of 2022 or, you know, or something.
January.
January or February.
The other piece of that there is, is that, you know, all things day on track of yard. We'll go back to having a holiday open house here then with stakeholders in December to Christmas.
That's, yeah. I just like to get away from all that and just
Spread it out.
spread it out, you know, or other that's March of next year or something. I don't know.
Let's do, I have a worry. Because I'm, April, we have the Chamber Breakfast. Those are the dates that they have available that are open that other businesses have not taken. So, it's those two months, but I can talk to Micah and let her know that a different month.
Oh, no.
This is good.
Yeah, but that's National Community College.
I was thinking for the
I mean.
Thursday.
Unless, I mean, unless like we're talking like this, like October, say, this year or some, something like, spread it out to do an after-hours, like earlier this year. Yeah. I don't think it matters.
Okay. Yeah, so for your Chamber Breakfast, she was talking about March and April of 22.
Right.
Right. For your Business After Hours, the times that she has available that are not booked by a business, already going to do Business After Hours, what's that month of? August or October of this fall.
Of this fall, okay. Well, I think, you know, August is a busy time. October would probably be better. I mean, I'm just thinking, August is just running around. People are around trying to do that. So, I'd say, look at October then.
I think October. Everybody else will camp that? We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out.
And that is October. I'm not sure what dates.
The fourth Thursday.
So, we'll just.
Because the DPS is hosting a regional competition that month.
Well, it'll be the next, it'll be the next.
Okay. Last few items, the last month's board assessment. The results were that the HLC, there was really no negative comments. One person commented that we did not maintain confidentiality on an item. So, I, I just wanted, I reiterate that we're not trying to protect people's personal information, names, et cetera. So, please be mindful of that. Most of us said that we agreed that the HLC process and education is crystal clear. So, bless you. So, right now, these are, I mean, what I say is that they're documenting that I think we're doing a good job. So, I'll have you go ahead and bless you and fill them out again for tonight. Thank you. Thank you. And I think we're at the end of our agenda. Any other items? Should we adjourn this meeting? Thank you, everybody.
Have a good vacation, Ryan.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Enjoy yourself. Give him time off. Well, we're ready.
Bye, guys. Thanks.
Bye, Shanda. Thank you.
Okay. Obviously sending our SVP.
I'll write it down.
Is that for, is that just for us or? Is that for, or is that also for?
Okay.
Free wife or?
If you want to read.
I don't know. I, and I want to. Okay, okay. I, I'm sure Tree said it like now. I don't want to go, but. I, I'm sure tree safety like now, I don't want to go, but.
Okay, so you are, you was the plus one?
Who all is, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be.
Yes. Dave, you want me to put you down just as a maybe?
Yeah, cause I'd like to see the. Guess I'm going to the board repeat on the nineteenth, so what's another few days?
Twenty-second, it's a Tuesday night.
I'll make it through the board retreat and.
Be a couple days to recover.
I dismissed it. Thinking that we could go to the past. It's gonna next year, but.
This is from Michigan, how did they find me for this new partnership community law?
What is it?
They're offering me a job. Oh, good, this is adult outpatient, immediate openings for adult outpatient psychiatric program, thank you. Diamond Hills up here, Satana, history, Buffalo. And and the reason I got it is because it's the state licensure Kansas for L C P C.
Thanks, boy.
Anyway. I think hilarious, I think my eligibility probably used up. But it's amazing, they sent her to the college, passing on to Shelley. Shelley, Shelley may have gotten one too, because she has the same licensure I do.
Yeah.
Funny, funny, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I bet they all come out of B S R B or.
Yeah, and I tell you what, I I for the state count conference, I got eleven hours and I've got two others. That's thirteen, I've gotta get. Eighteen more. By December twenty thirty. Yeah, I, I don't care if computers is, but I'll tell you something, I got a call today. These will be in Downland.
That's what people are doing.
The letter was a little, they got the letter today saying that the board had decided that they were going, because of lack of state. That they were going to start charging. And they were, first couch. Okay, Jerice.
Is this just a second copy?
They had thirty.
This isn't that.
All the rest though. She said all the rest of them.
Thank you, Lance. How is it?